So our library trustee meeting is commencing at 6:12 PM. And let me see. Let me see, the agenda that we have is first and foremost is the minutes.
We're gonna try to, wanna try to put those off for a little while?
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll, um, we'll put the minutes off and see what you hear from someone, just send the minutes. So, okay, then we'll move on to the library director's report. Okay, um, so mask requirements, they will be discussed tonight at the board of health meeting, which is happening simultaneously with ours. Um, I did reach out to them to see if anything has changed. They told me they'd let me know. Um, the library will follow suit with whatever they decide. Um, I have let the staff and volunteer know that I'd like them to rethink wearing their masks. We see between a hundred and a hundred and seventy-five people every day in the building, um, many of which are going on vacation.
Did they come in, they're, they're required, the patrons are required to wear masks though, right?
Unless they're vaccinated. Right now as it stands, unless fully vaccinated, masks are required. Most people I've noticed have been masking up. Um, families that come in with their little kids, even if they're vaccinated, they mask up, um, because the kids do.
Well, the kids are at risk.
Um, I do have signs on the children's room section that says, for the safety of our youngest patrons, please wear a mask in this area. Um, people are strongly urged to wear them, but that's the most we can really do at the moment as far as requiring them. We have to get the board of health to give us their blessing and that, which I'm kind of feeling like we're going in that direction again.
Yes, yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah, but she would just be.
I mean, there's other, there's towns all around us that have instituted the inside mask mandate.
Yeah, I heard that.
You know, Northampton and, you know, Fort One and East Hampton, I think, and so, yeah, it's coming.
Yeah, they're.
They're not gonna require to see the vaccination cards, are they?
No, I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay.
Um, I don't think that's something we have to think about yet. Um, especially with all the breakthrough cases, doesn't really matter, I guess, at this point, which is better off either if you are.
Masks inside.
Vaccinated. Yeah, so that brings me to our in-person programming is slated to start September 7th, um, with our new hours. Um, the community room is still hosting our book sale, which is gonna host until the end of September, which kind of buys us a little time on bigger programming. If we can't use that room, I don't have to worry about people wanting to squish sixty people in there at once. We'll have this conference room open, the local history room, and our activity room for the children. Um, and we'll still be doing limited capacities. We want sign-ups for things so that we know how many people to expect. Um, I think our first in-person will be our book group, which is the second Thursday of September. So we'll start with that and see how we go, how it goes. Yeah, so we're gonna kind of slow and steady, see how everything goes. If we feel like it's too much, um, we'll pull back. The playgroup are still continuing outdoors as long as the weather permits. They're gonna start back up in September for the fall, every Wednesday. They do a 10 AM and they do an 11 AM, so they can split the group into two and have smaller amounts of kids together at once outside. Um.
So what are the ages on that?
On the preschool, so it's birth to age five, kindergarten.
Can anybody show up for that?
Um, yes, they, they're encouraged to sign up at the moment, just because of the, um, the space limitations. But anyone can join and they can come to any of them. They don't have to come to all. They can just pick and choose which ones.
And you said that's Thursday?
Every Wednesday, every Wednesday morning, 10 and 11. And they've got the lovely outdoor space they've been using and really, they're so cute. I love watching them. They're doing tie dye this Wednesday.
Oh, really fun.
They're gonna do tie dye things, so I can't wait to get out there and see what they do. They're adorable. Um, so, uh, the library has received five mobile hotspots from a government grant, which will cover the cost of the hotspots for the, um, for one year. So we have them from at least this fiscal year, so until June 30th. They will be paid, completely paid for, and they'll be available for checkout soon. I just received them. And I'm now going through all of the hoops, trying to set them up and make sure we have.
How does that work?
So a mobile hotspot, I didn't bring one. There's this like little tiny, um, device that is hooked into T-Mobile's network. And you would come and check one out and you can bring it with you on vacation or have it just at home. And you connect your devices to it for wifi.
Oh.
So like, say you're gonna go on vacation, you're gonna go camping.
Okay, so obviously there's no wifi.
If you want wifi, you wanna be able to access the data on your phone, you can go ahead and take one of our hotspots. And it's completely free for the people who use them, um.
Do you have to have T-Mobile for a carrier?
You don't. So that's just who the government purchased them through, so we have the T-Mobile. Um, and then after the year is up, if they don't continue to fund the program, we then take on the cost, or they will take them back. So it's a monthly cost, and let me see, it's like twenty dollars a month to have.
For all five of them?
Um, I believe it's per. Um, so we definitely do, don't need five, I don't think, but that was the minimum amount they would send us. I know, it's really kind of cool.
I knew there was an, uh, you could do a hotspot in your front, like a person's phone could be a hotspot, but I didn't know they had like separate little devices.
Yeah, just plug it in and you can bring it with you anywhere. You can bring it out to the beach, you can bring it camping. Um, look, if your power goes out, you could borrow one that's fully charged and have, you know, access to internet on your battery-operated devices. Um, if you lose your internet for whatever reason, Comcast decides to go wonky, we'll have T-Mobile. Um.
How long do you have to check it out?
I haven't really figured that out yet. Um, I'm working with a whole bunch of other libraries to see what their policies are, because, um, a lot of us are starting fresh and have never had them before. So there is a template out there, so I have to sit down and figure out exactly what the loan limit times are gonna be. Can people check them out more than one time in a row? Can they renew? Um, will there be fines associated with it? All that fun stuff. And then, you know, with the passwords and access. And they also have a filtering device on it, which we can turn on and off, but that's up to the person who borrows it. If they're over eighteen, they can request that we send it to them without the filtering. So there's a lot to go along with it. Um, and then we can decide, you know, to see how many people will use them, because there is need. Um, you know, a lot of people say, well, who doesn't have internet? Who doesn't have a computer? But there are a lot of people in town that don't. Um, so it could be something that a couple of people use all the time, or, you know, a whole bunch of people use sporadically when they go on vacation and stuff. And my mom is already talking about using it with the cape when they go camping, like, they can test it out for me.
That's right.
So, yeah, so it's, it's pretty neat. I don't think we'll need the five moving forward, but it might be nice to keep one or two, um, in the future, just to keep people having that option to connect if they need it. Um, so we'll keep everyone afloat and see what happens with all that, once I get it all. I've got a lot going on right now, so it's kind of like one of my side projects. Um, I am working on our heiress report, which is due August 27th, which I'll need a signature on. I know Janice, if she's having a hard time right now, um, maybe I could call you to stop by if you're working or something. Or I could bring it to you even and have you sign it.
Okay.
Okay, because I have to have it done by the seven, 27th, which gives me at least a bit of time. It's almost done.
Yeah.
But it's been a lot this year since everything like changed so much over the year as far as how we keep our stats. And, um, what they wanna know has changed. They wanna know like how many programs we had, were they in person, were they virtual? How many people attended? Did we record them? All that. So, yeah, it's a little different this year. A really change in the game on me, but they're, they've been really lenient with, um, the requirements, which is nice. The state's kind of given us a little bit of a break as far as the hours we were supposed to be open and all that stuff.
Has that stuff kind of been recorded as we went along?
Yes.
To make it a little easier?
Yeah, yeah, it definitely has. Like, you know, we get all of our statistics as far as what's circulated. Um, I kept track on our calendar of, you know, exactly when we started doing the curbside. And I even kept ledgers of how many people came. And, um, then the circulation stats backed that up to show how many people, how many books went out during that time. Um, our circulation did decrease quite a bit from the year, you know, obviously we were closed for a while, but it wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be. So, and then now.
Numbers-wise, it wasn't? No?
It wasn't as bad as I thought, you know, we really, we, once we were able to circulate, people did take a lot, I mean, take advantage of it quite a bit. Um, not as they would if they were able to come in and take stacks of their own books. But now, you should say our stats have just like skyrocketed. We have people, you know, coming with bags and bags of books and digging out bags and bags. People are just really happy that we're back. So, um, it'll be interesting to see what next years are as compared to this year, for sure.
So, does the heiress report, um, reflect on the new regulations?
Um, yes. So the money that we get from the grants every year from the state, um, is from the circulation statistics and the offset as far as, you know, how many people from other towns come and use us, um, which is still a decent amount. And they've increased the money with, you know, state funding, like a huge, healthy, healthy budget, so.
So I'm not sure if other libraries experiencing the same.
Yeah, definitely. Some even worse, because we, we were here the whole time and able to kind of circulate as much as we could, even when others' libraries weren't yet. So I think that helps a lot. But as far as the financial report, I start that one next. And they're really leaning even about our book budget spending. A lot of towns have freezes on their account spending, which we didn't. Um, but, so they're, they're just being really brave about the numbers this year, so, it's kind of nice to not have to worry as much about that. Like, if we're all a little depressed, you know, looking at our numbers and, you know, everything that went on in the past year, not being able to be open, but.
And the fines are completely off, right?
Yes, as of right now, through the pandemic, um, fines were completely off. And that actually brings me to the next thing that I wanted to bring up, which is kind of a big one, because it's in my notes. Which, I'll give you this after, um, and you can kind of pull from it, because I'm not gonna read this whole thing. Um, but I wanted to address the board about fine elimination. Um, so many libraries have been doing it, and it's been working out really, really well. Um, we, you know, libraries haven't charged fines on items through the entire pandemic. And we're kind of looking to extend that policy moving forward. Um, the library's goal is to make access to the library and its material, materials equitable for everyone. Um, research indicates that fines are a deterrent for many patrons, causing them to use their library less or not at all. They have big fines, they don't wanna come back. Um, a lot of people get embarrassed too. They can't afford it, or they're just, you know, super mortified that they owe the library a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. They're like, oh, forget it, we're just gonna keep these books and never use the library again, which is so harmful to their children, who then can't come to the library, can't take out books anymore, because, you know, everyone has their reasons that they can't afford it. You figure if, you know, a low-income family comes in and takes out twenty-five items and they don't return them, and it's ten cents a day per item over time, I mean, that, it adds up. And, um, and people can't afford, especially during the pandemic, they can't afford to pay those types of fines. Um, and let's see here, so research shows that eliminating fines on overdue material has little significant impact on the return rates. Overdue fines do not teach responsibility, nor is that part of the library's mission. It's the library's job to provide equitable access to the information. And by imposing fines and prohibiting people from borrowing items when the fines add up, it negatively impacts the people who may need it most. Um, it's a growing trend among a lot of libraries in the US and locally, including Greenfield, Northampton, Southwick, East Long Meadow. And there's a whole bunch out in eastern mass. Um, I actually couldn't name them all. It was, it was just crazy. So, um, one example, the Forbes Library in Northampton, they eliminated their late fines for children and young adults in 2019. And they just currently stopped charging adult late fees as well. Um, their trustees unanimously approved the policy change at their April 2021 meeting, upon the recommendation of they have a racial and social justice committee, which is kind of cool. Um, research shows that rather than encourage people to return library materials in a timely manner, overdue fines often instead result in patrons not returning items at all, because they're discouraged by the fees or unable to afford them. And then the library just gets the items back and they lose their patrons. Um, one thing that, uh, they said in the article was, the library late fees are a legacy from a previous era, and we are delighted to do away with them. We work hard to break down barriers to access to books, technology, and information. And this decision goes a long way in supporting that effort. That was Lisa Downing, our director. Um, you know, fee accumulation has gone down over the past decade, and it really has, when you look at what we give back to the town. This, you know, twenty to forty dollars per month, um, which really isn't a whole heck of a lot of money as compared to what the benefit could be for the town. Um, and a lot of towns have also seen that when they eliminate the fines, people will donate out of goodwill. Or they just say, oh, I feel really bad that this is late, let me make a donation to the library. Let me make a donation to your building fund or your children's programming. Um, so I think that really, you know, it's a good draw for people. Um, the one thing that we would still charge are the replacement fees if people aren't returning things, if they lose something, if they ruin a book.
So you're talking, you're talking like the CDs, the, the movies too?
Yes.
As well as the books?
So, excuse me, um, they wouldn't get the late fees when they're returned. Um, but if they did decide to keep them or not return them, we would definitely still charge that fine. Anything that is past twelve weeks overdue is charged on their account in full. So those fines would stay, so if.
That would be a replacement, you mean?
Yeah, so if they then.
After twelve weeks.
They would see that, you know, nasty gram on their account when they sign into their account and be like, oh wow, we owe the library a hundred and sixty dollars. But if they know we don't charge fines, they could just return them, and that would go away, that they wouldn't have to pay to replace them.
My, I guess my question is, what do we do about the, the serial, you know, the serial offenders? You know, we have those that, you know, because now we have, or at least we did, I'm assuming we still have like the ten dollar, if they owe ten dollars or more, if they can't take out any more books.
Yeah.
You know, what do we do about things like that? So that would be eliminated and.
Right. So that would only happen if they were really overdue, so past the twelve weeks.
Okay, twelve weeks, sorry.
We would see that on their account, we wouldn't let them continue to borrow. And we usually do, when someone comes to check something out, they'll say, oh hey, you like, you have these items that are really long overdue. Um, so it would be just that kind of grace period in between when they're late and when they're really late, that we would be a little more lenient than we are now.
And how about the, um, we still have the fifty, is it fifty book limit?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's system, system created, so we would still only be able to take fifty books. They could still only order up to twenty at a time. Sometimes people do. Um, if this would just be no accumulating fines.
Okay.
And anyone who currently has a fine could get it waived as long as their items have been returned. So it's kind of a way they encourage people to just continuously use the library and not have that pressure behind the, or afraid to come back. Or, and then, you know, like the, we've seen it where people just said, oh, well, I haven't taken my son here because we have these overdue books and I was embarrassed. And it's like, well, then your, your son hasn't been here in the past, you know, so many years. And when you, or they're going to Barnes and Noble, which I'm like, don't go to Barnes and Noble, come here, it's fine, you know? Like, we like to work it out so that people can be here, and that's, I think, the number one goal. Um, but it's worked out really well. Um, you know, other librarians, they really loved it. Um, they explained to the town that it was a small amount that, that they were getting anyway. And the library revenue increases with, um, people not being, you know, forced to pay fines. It's not like a negative conversation, it's more of a positive, but you could donate to the library instead. Um, and it does, it kind of like changes the dynamic a little bit, where we're not having like this combative, you owe us money and, you know, it's this amount, and people are freaking out. It's kind of more of a, oh.
And it can get combative.
It does. You know, really like, it makes you stop and think, like, is this really our job?
I know.
Policing people?
Yes, exactly.
You know, we're the Grammy-free public library, and I am like, not letting someone's child take books home, because, you know, their mom left her books in her other car and it's in the shop, or whatever it is, you know? So this kind of turns it from a negative to a positive, and it really supports our, our mission. Um, my proposal would be to, since we're doing it now anyway, kind of use this time as a good segue into it. Um, you know, I can compose a letter with a lot of these, you know, quotes and facts, and we could send it to the select board. And if we vote on it, if we decide to go forward with it, um, and let them know this is what we've decided. And if they have any questions or concerns about what we're doing, you know, we can absolutely, you know, come to our next meeting if they'd like, or whatever it is, if they wanna talk about it. But I don't, like I said, twenty bucks a month, I don't really see.
Yeah.
As being too big of a deal, but, um, I mean, we can make ourselves open for that.
So that would be something that we vote on tonight, and then you would take it to the select board?
Yeah, I can create a letter and, um, have Janice send it over. Okay. What do you guys think? Do you have any questions about it?
So you ladies are all volunteers, so you've experienced that interaction with the patrons.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So.
And we always have to call Jennifer, because we can't, you know, override it ourselves, really, right? So we say, oh, oh, wait, Jen.
And in my opinion, like, it's better to have the books back than to have the money, you know?
Right, yeah.
It's not a lot of money. I mean, it is if it adds up.
Right.
But, you know, in general, if you only owe like a dollar or two dollars, it's a big deal, don't bother.
Right, exactly. I'd rather just have the book back, which is worth, you know, forty dollars, or, you know, whatever it is. Um, so.
I mean, even if it's cash, you know?
I know, that's another thing.
Well, that's another thing. I mean, oftentimes, in fact, more often than not, they always pull their card out and, you know, to pay their fines.
Or run out to their car and get change.
Yeah, or something, you know? Which is, like, then I tell people, you have to, you know, go online and do it online. And if they're then reluctant, because they don't know how to do the online, or they don't wanna be bothered with it, then they're just never gonna come back. They're gonna say, forget it, you know, we'll deal with it another time. And, um, another thing is that we've seen with a lot of the digital loans, people borrowing from our digital catalog. We don't really have a lot of fines anymore, because people borrowing that way, their thing just expires when it's time, and they don't really get the choice to keep it and, you know, have fines. So that's another reason why, um, the fines have really gone down. A lot of people are utilizing that instead of, you know, physical books, even though a lot of people.
Is that what happens? It just expires and then it's gone from there?
Yeah, it just expires, comes off of your.
And it comes off and they can't finish the book.
They have to go back in line and read it again, and it's kind of nice, like, it's very rigid. Keeps them in track.
It does.
It's depressing. I go into mine and it's like, your thing expires in two days. I'm like, oh my gosh! Pressure's on, and then I'm like hiding in the bathroom with my headphones on, trying to listen to my book before it expires. Um, so there's that part of it too. It's, it's interesting how things are changing. And, you know, we see this like evolving way of the library system.
And how do we, um, communicate to our patrons that those fees are, um?
I know a lot of libraries have been putting it in the media, once their, their boards decide to do it. Um, they've been putting out articles. Yeah, so we could contact the town reminder and let them know, they could put something out there. Um, our website, we can do the, an email blast to the friends list, the Facebook, kind of let people know.
Little signs here.
Maybe something out by the street, because I find like our street sign really does get a lot of, um.
Attention.
Yeah, thank you.
People go by, yeah.
We put on that we were having an ongoing book sale and it just all of a sudden exploded. There were people coming in from who knows where, and just like, oh, I was driving by and I saw this sign, I had no idea we were even open.
Oh, cool.
So I think putting like, we're now fine-free, um, that might have someone driving by who has all these books in, you know, their attic, and say, oh hey, we're fine-free now, I might as well return my books and maybe get in the library again, so.
All you have to do is put out like something, we are now fine-free, you know, some, just something, something like that, and keep it out for a week or something.
We used to have the time when there were no fines, right?
Yeah, it was like a fine-free week.
Right.
Yeah.
Or you do the key end good, you know, the donations to the.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we'll have to find a different way to get people to donate to the community. Um, but yeah, we could definitely get it out there, and there is someone I can work with on the CW Mars end of it, where they will go in and, um, change our settings so that the fines won't accrue. Um, and we can even say like, we want anyone whose account has been, you know, closed down because of this reason, to now, you know, open up their account again. And you can't get rid of the replacement fines, but you can, they'll take away their fines that they have previously accrued. So it kind of clean slates everyone.
Yeah.
Which would be lovely.
You could just put something on like, come on back, you know, come on back, we are now fine-free, or something like that, you know?
Bring back your dusty books.
Send them dummy letters or anything if they don't return?
Um, we do emails. Um, we haven't done actual letters unless somebody is really, really bad and then have like pages of their stuff. Then I'll send them, or I'll call them and just say, hey, you know? Um, sometimes the phone call gets more of a reaction than sending something in the mail. Um, but we haven't really done a whole lot of mailing this because of, um, the cost of postage and everything. But since our library is small enough, we've been able to get away with just harassing people by the phone.
Yeah, emails. I think I remember those letters from a long time ago.
Yeah, I was concerned, like, the old library sending out some letters, I don't remember what they were for, but maybe that was it.
Yeah, well, we had a, an issue where they were processing through and we would print them, and we would send them out, but in the meantime, there was like a, there was like a delay, where people were like, oh, you already brought that back, like last Wednesday, why are you harassing me? And it was like, oh, forget it, because then there's that delay in time.
Right, right.
When they process them, and then we process them, and then, you know, it's a lot of extra work having to check the shelf and see if they actually did return it before you harassed them. Um, so, you know, we would still have to track down the people that have long overdue items, but that would definitely cut back on a lot of work.
Yeah, I think it'll have like a positive impact with the people, patrons.
That's kind of what we're going for, just like a more positive, you know, we really just wanna get people in and to see what we have, what we can do to help them and get them the information. So many people that don't know, you know, what we have here. I think, I feel like a stalker sometimes, because I'm like, did you tell your friends that you can take out video games here? You should tell your friends, and the kids are like, wait here. Calm down, I'm not gonna go to my friend's house and tell them about the library.
You should.
But, because there are people that come in and they're like, I never knew you had this, I never knew you did that. So just getting the word out, is just, you know, throwing it in people's faces as much as possible online and.
We can do like, um, for the donations for the food pantry, like, um, do like a couple gift baskets and say that if you bring in donations, then you can get a ticket for a raffle for like a gift basket or something.
That's a great idea. I love that. Yeah. That is an amazing idea, because we usually do something for the food pantry every year.
And I know some people just like to donate, but, you know, if there's like some kind of incentive.
Price.
Yeah, sometimes it makes it more fun.
You know, when you did the, um, the no fines for, for food donations, did you give a lot?
Yes.
You did?
Oh, yeah, we'd have boxes and boxes of, of goods, you know, it's funny.
I hadn't done it one, one of the times. I was like, thank God! Because, you know, like, I think I had, um, a significant fines and tried in stuff, and yeah, it was, it was great.
And some people would bring in like one canned good, and other people would bring in like whole box full and say, we cleared our pantry.
Why don't we do that before we implement the, the fine elimination? What if we do that before we implement the, the fine elimination?
We do it one day and eliminate it the next.
But yeah, we can definitely come up with another fun way to spend the, the food drive, because I do like to do that. Get people to give back.
We know how things work in this town. Things take long, come to happen. So, you know, between writing a letter and having this like board meeting and getting their approval, I could take, you know, chunk of time. So we could, um, add to our food pantry.
On the end of, um, I'll contact the council in aging and see what they need, if they're in need right now. And we could always get something going.
We probably haven't done any of that in a long time.
We've spent a bit, at least a couple of years with everything that happened with the way it all happened.
I know, just me being in this building with trustees, I'm thinking, my God, when was the last time I was here?
Oh, yeah, the last month.
So, I didn't make something else.
It's amazing. And everyone kept coming into the library in the beginning and like, well, you're in such a good mood. And I'm like, I'm just happy to see you. I'm just so happy to be able to be in the same space and face to face and not have all these, you know, technology things and, you know.
Sort of back to normal.
Yeah, and it's so much better when I don't have my child in my ear and the kitten and the cat and just the shenanigans happening.
So tired of this and stuff. So tired.
We had one, I don't know if it was trustee or if it was the friends meeting, but I was in my kitchen at the table and Scott was behind me. And he opened every cabinet looking for something and then he walked away. And I'm like trying so hard not to get up and close them all, because I could see them in my camera. And I'm like, oh, my God, is this bothering anyone else? Because I'm ready to just get up and kill it.
Why did he choose that?
He just like opened them all and walked away. So that everyone in the meeting can now see my.
See what's in your, in your cabinet. I know. That's the reason having some doors on them, isn't it? So nobody can see what's in there.
Look on my face was probably priceless because I was like, are you kidding me? Like, and then I kept looking and like, I really just want to go close them. What are you doing to me?
I just sent him a text, close those.
You see him come back and do the washing. Yeah, after what I was like, what are you doing to me? You know I'm neurotic. I cannot live like this.
Yeah, I'm OCD. It would bother me.
Like, kind of like look at everyone's faces to see if anyone else is having the same feeling as me. Because I'm just like, oh, wait, I can't focus.
Somebody says, geez, Jen, you got a lot of tomatoes.
The topware that I have in my cabinet is embarrassing. It's just like an avalanche. I'm surprised it didn't all end up. You're just like, oh, my gosh, that's embarrassing. Now I have the kitten, so if that happened, the kitten would be up there.
I liked it best when the cat would walk in front of you.
She does that. She wants, likes to lay on my laptop when I'm on it. So she does that. She kind of stalks me.
I just remember your daughter when she was like in the camera, like she's around you and you're like.
She has to. At one meeting, I'm trying to give my report and I'm like pushing her away. I'm like, I love you so much. Can you please stop? Mommy is trying to be professional. She's just like, no, don't talk about my pajamas.
That was funny.
It's like, we need, can we please get back to normal? Because, um, yeah, like I couldn't do it anymore. Like, everyone was so nice about it, but I was like, inside I was dying a little, like, really, we have to do this. Like, I never thought I would be having, you know, a trustee meeting in my yoga pants and my child next to me and my cat in my gaze, but here we are. It's definitely been quite the career I've had. Seen a lot. Anyhow, we got off track.
Um, so I would like to make motion that we pursue fine elimination for the Grammy free public library. While we, Jen, to communicate with the select board, um, to allow them to know that we would like to follow through with that idea. I should be wearing this down.
Can you remember everything you just said?
Sure.
To pursue fine elimination.
Pursue. And communicate with the select board.
Beautiful.
Does anybody want to second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Beautiful. I'm excited. I think this will be a positive thing for us, for sure. Um, I do also have the accounts that were sent to me from Leah. The, let me see, what month are we in? August. July income. I didn't print it for everyone, but the.
Can you, can you pass it around after?
Yeah, absolutely. The New York Life Securities, that's the one we're looking at. Um, it made thirty-eight dollars and thirty cents with a change in value of three hundred and thirteen dollars minus the fees. So our, um, balance in that account is now thirty-one thousand ninety dollars and fifty-four cents. And we had begun to ask thirty thousand even back in March. Yeah, so it's doing pretty well. That's the bottom one. And the top two are the, um, the Alice Stewart funds, which is showing nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
And that was eighty-twenty, eighty-twenty that we have doing?
Yeah. Yeah, so eighty percent safe, twenty percent.
Grow.
Yeah.
Which is a good idea.
It's amazing to see the difference.
As long as it's not losing, then, you know.
Are their friends still meeting?
Um, not in the summer. Yeah, they're meeting again in September.
So, I, I don't know that they communicate their events together. I know you sent us a little email saying they're gonna meet, but, um, it's not, somehow that gets passed now.
Okay, I'll just make sure we're getting around the friends. Did you get the friends emails?
They don't send anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything.
Okay, we'll make sure that that happens.
Do they have a secretary? Do they have, do they have somebody?
Yes, they do.
Do they have a secretary?
They do have a secretary.
Is it Leah?
Leah C.
Oh, she's a treasure, right?
Yes, thank you. Lauren is our VP and she kind of works as the.
As the secretary also.
Secretary. Yeah, she does all the course.
How many members do they have that?
Um, they, well, they have eighty-two members total. They have probably about five or six that are active. So, hopefully, I'll make sure it gets posted. I'm hoping to meet in person with them in September. I feel like that makes a difference to, you know, actually coming into the library to meet, um, with attendance. Sure. Do you want, do you want this for yours?
Sure.
To maybe put with whatever. Okay, um. Does anyone else, is there anything else on the gym?
Um, I was just.
Or warrants? I don't have anything for the building update. Not on wood. Everything is.
Everything's working.
So Foxwood.
Oh, um, the landscaping, landscaping update?
Landscaping update. Um, I don't know how far we were as of our last meeting, but if you've seen, the rock is there from Alice Stewart's garden. They did a great job escalating and bringing that over. We are now waiting, Janet Hartley's on vacation, but there are, um, plantings planned for the back side of the, the building in the fall.
Well, I think, um, she's back. Um, and I reached out to her, but I haven't heard from her. Um, so I, I guess the next thing is the solar, um. Oh, yeah, that's the next thing, but.
And that's going in the front with the rock, right?
Right, um, I know Janet wasn't thrilled with the way that rock ended up being placed there. And there were, and she was away, so she was just seeing photos, but, um, I haven't heard that from her. But we really should get that finished and, you know, kind of everything dug out from over Alice's and, um, just put in there. But, I don't know, early August. I think we should wait till like September to move things.
And you've been helping out with that, with the landscaping?
Well, we haven't really been doing anything.
We did a lot of meeting, trying to make decisions and trying to figure stuff out. We definitely put a lot of, um, mental energy into it, really, really trying to figure everything out. But Lou's been very, um, helpful in getting people to volunteer, volunteer to do things. Like everything, we talked about it for six months and then everything happened in a day. You know, that was all due to Lou's, uh, people that he knows and, you know, his little network and so it all kind of.
The area out back hasn't been scratched out though yet, has it now?
So that's like phase two. So we're getting there. We're getting there.
That's good?
Yeah, it's great out there. Yeah, it's really pretty, especially if it's gonna be in the nineties, you might want to. Waiting. I got some trees from a woman who donated them.
Are they still alive?
No.
I was gonna say, it's been a while since she donated those, so.
And they were like little, they were just like sticks and, and, uh, I, I brought them home and I potted them and I left them in the shade all summer. And then we had that storm the other day. I looked and they were like, it just, um, sheared.
What were they? What kind?
They were birch, I think, or no, they'd get back. It was dogwood. But they, they didn't look right from the beginning.
But we want something maybe a little bit larger too, you know?
Not there. This is not a huge area to plant.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe in the next phase.
Yeah, in the back, a tree.
We'll see.
When, when's the next meeting for, for that? Do you know? They don't know yet?
No, I reached out to Janet yesterday. I didn't hear back from her, so she's pretty much the one makes the decision for us.
Oh, okay.
And Lou, Lou's gonna get help from me to sun to help dig, I guess, help to dig. And I think the soil here is, is not that good. It's really hard to dig here, so. I think it's gonna be harder than it looks.
Yeah.
It gives like clay. Or you reach, um, stones, so you gotta. Get the pickaxe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that again. Had enough of that.
Um, so I haven't heard from anybody about the minutes. I was checking and no email, no text message for minutes.
So maybe it just, um, if you're done with the minutes next month.
Yeah, we can try to track them down before our next meeting and.
Um, and so that's, um, all like what you had planned to talk about, right? Um, building and the landscaping and the fines and.
I have the warrants that you.
I was gonna say, you want a, want the warrants?
Uh, yeah, I have four, um, and that's because we have fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two. That have to be kind of mapped out. Um, the first one is for two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And that's Baker and Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, Ingram Entertainment and Spolastic. The second one was for ninety dollars and sixty-four cents from O-Talco. And one thousand six hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents is Baker and Taylor and Blackstone Publishing. And our last one is one thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And that was Blackstone Ingram Entertainment Hoopla by Midwest Tapes and the Library Store.
So somebody make a motion to accept the warrants. Have you seen them? Have any sign them?
I'll make a motion to accept the warrants as red.
And I'll second it. Okay, all in favor?
That, um, Hoopla.
I'll find out here.
Yep, sign in the date in that little space. Um, the Hoopla is actually, um, another digital service that we are going to try. Um, using our grant money that we have, um, it's a thousand dollars startup. So you basically give this company a thousand dollars and they charge the library per usage. So that money kind of sits in a kitty and they, as people borrow books and movies and stuff, it, like, there's a cost per item. And it comes out of that. And then once we get low, they let me know. And then they say, do you want to now pay per item or do you want to purchase a plan, kind of a thing? And it's really popular. Boston Public Library has it, um.
It's all digital.
It's all digital. So it's kind of like our digital catalog, but what's really nice about Hoopla is that everything, um, is available all the time. There are no waits. You don't have to be on a hold list. They have access. They don't have everything, but they, what they do have is completely free of wait times. It's just instant access, which is lovely. So.
I wanted a book. I got a.
Yeah, you sign into it, you check it out, you see if they have it. If they have it, you just check it out to yourself on your library card.
So I would start with Hoopla or am I gonna CW Mars?
You would start with Hoopla, yeah. This one will be a completely separate, um, thing, which will go by your library card prefix number. So as long as you have a Grammy library card, you can get into it. And you can basically, I'm not sure if there's a limit on how many you can have at once, but, um, you don't have to wait. It's lovely. The Boston Public Library has it, and as long as you're a Massachusetts resident, you can get a Boston Public Library E-card. And you can go into it that. I used to do it on my phone, um, but you don't have access to everything. So being a member and having a library card that goes with, you know, our library, you have more access to more items.
Sounds nice.
Yeah, so, and a lot of people don't know that you can access.
Is it the same kind of thing that if you don't finish it, it disappears or expires?
I believe so. It expires after a time.
It tweaks on the Libby, which.
But you can change that to twenty-one.
You can?
Yeah, you, there's, um, an option in your settings to change your time period. Because some people prefer to have less time. They don't want for the full twenty-one days. I don't know why.
But then you can just send it back though.
But you can just send it back when you're done.
But it defaults on the fourteen days, right?
Yeah, so instead of the twenty-one, but you can change that.
Oh, that's good.
If you bring your devices to me, I'll show you how to do that.
We can do that like on our Kindle?
Yeah, you can do it on any, any internet ready device. Which, um, that should be live. I'm sending them the paperwork, um, probably by the end of this week. I have to make all these choices about filtering and, you know, renewables and all this stuff, so, um, I have to make all those choices and then send to the paperwork and they get us up and running. And we test it out and then I'll go live with it and I'll let people know. I know. So addicting. I love my audiobooks on my Hoover Drive, but you have to wait a long time for them. So, you know, this would be really nice for people just to go on and use it right away. And you only have it for the first year and we'll see kind of how the usage goes and then we can decide from there whether or not we want to continue with it, with funding for it.
So it doesn't, so then it doesn't stay on your device like, like a Kindle or anything?
Right.
Like that it just comes in and you read it and then it disappears?
It depends on how you do it, which, um, some devices, you can have it set to just run over the internet, so it will stream it.
Okay, okay.
Or you can choose to download it so that you can listen, listen or watch anytime. You won't have to have a connection to the internet, um, wifi. Which, so you can do it one of two ways and you can set your settings up. If it downloads to your device and it expires, it comes off of your Libby, but you have to go in and delete it out of your files. Because you can end up with like a whole bunch of files in your folder and you're like, what are all these? Because they don't have the access to go into your device to get rid of your files, but, so it depends on how you set it up. It's really kind of complicated, but, um, I can definitely help you guys with it if you have questions or anything. Whenever someone has a tech question, holler for me.
Do you have like an idea of like what the charge is if, say, I download a book?
Um, I want to say it's like a dollar twenty-six-ish per patron per item.
It can go a long way.
Yeah, so it's kind of interesting to see what the usage will be at first. And once people really get into it, um, you know, what. Yeah, so kind of interesting to see what the usage will be at first. And once people really get into it, um, you know, what we can amp it up to be. I know a lot of libraries use it and they've liked it so far.
That would be something CW Mars would recognize as a part of our leadership.
Yes, yeah, we can use our stats for that too. And they'll give us, they have their own dashboard where they will show us what our stats are for that too. Which would be nice to have. I know, sometimes it's like, I know our history, the ancestry doesn't tell us how many people use it, which is kind of unfortunate. We can count it as one of our, um, access points, but we can't count like who uses it. So it doesn't really help our statistics any, but this definitely will. It's a really healthy digital, um, presence and people really use, I probably carry half of it just on with the nine I have currently checked out, but I know we'll have enough time to listen to all the nine, but we'll try.
So. So for next month's meeting, um, are you gonna let us know about, um, like whether or not we're gonna have to go back to masks coming indoors?
Absolutely. I'll let you know. Um, I should be, I will be watching the recording of the Board of Health meeting tonight after they're done to kind of see what they decided on that.
And, yeah, and how, how are you gonna let like the patrons know, like through the media and paper and sign?
Yeah, it's gonna be really a little tough in the beginning. If we do go back to mask wearing, we're gonna have to kind of pound people a little bit at first, but we do have masks here, so.
Yeah, I did see them.
We make it pretty easy for people if they don't have a mask, if they forgot it or whatever.
Of course, if we go back to masks here, the whole community is gonna be back to.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be your workplace and, you know, the donkeys and it's gonna be everybody, yeah, so.
Yeah, so we'll make sure to put it out there and just, um, you know, make new signs for the door before people come in. A new sign for the, the welcome table that we have here. But I don't foresee it being too much of a problem. People are pretty, they're playing with a drill at this point. You know, like a lot of people have already been doing it.
Yeah.
See, I've seen more people in masks than I've seen not in masks.
The past week, the past week I have for sure, you know, with this, this Delta thing flying around.
Come in and they're like, I guess we're back to this. We had our fun.
Yeah, I know.
It's easy, easily to get back into the routine of doing the mask and wearing it.
Yeah, true. A lot less scary than the first time around, you know, that's just what we gotta do.
Just wash my hands.
Yeah.
And that stuff.
Yes, which with the new kitten, every time I put on hand sanitizer, I have these. Every time, like I need to stop. I need to find something that's not gonna, or I need to stop next time I can, but. He's a little devil. Oh, he's so cute. He's adorable with Emma. Like, he waits for her to fall asleep at night, cause he sleeps in her room. And then he crawls around, he like wraps around her head. He'll sleep around her.
Where did you get him?
Paws on her face. My aunt, um, had a friend who had kittens and she, um, she knew that Emma wanted one. And she kind of, you know, really without asking, decided to.
Don't you love it?
I, I don't think we really had a choice, but I'm a sucker for kittens anyway, so. We're just like, here you go, we got a kitten. They're so sweet together. He just follows her around and, um, and she's his mom, so I'm grandma. But it's, it's cute. They're just two peas in a pod and I take the brunt of the playfulness.
Did she go to kitten this year? She weasels her way out.
Yeah. More about that to come. Um, so our next meeting is slated for September fourteenth, which is a little late in the month, but the second Tuesday.
Yeah, that is the second Tuesday late.
Um, and the friends meeting for anyone who wants to, um, come will be on the sixteenth, so we'll see a lot of each other.
That week. Is there anything else that we can talk about tonight?
No.
I think we killed it. Okay, so I can make a motion to adjourn the meeting and, uh, um, oh, or does somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven oh seven?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That is it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.